And we will, uh, what are we talking about? I got it right in front of me. We're going to talk about the Main Avenue South conversion project and city center plan goals to start with. So who is running the show? Doug?
Yes. Well, I'm talking about at least the Main Avenue South project. I'll get her. Worked a minute ago. The, um, the adopted city center plan has several goals that relate to transportation. Highlighted, some of them are the, to look at ways to improve traffic operations and circulation in the downtown area. Part of enhancing circulation is to provide multiple routes for people to get to the, to the same place. Much of that was talked about in the plan as to converting the one-way streets to two-way streets and to, what, to enhance the pedestrian experience by creating slower traffic, less traffic, um, maybe wider sidewalks, areas for outside seating, et cetera, that just made it a, a more pleasant place for people to, um, to spend their time. We've come up with a, a project that is new to the transportation improvement plan that you'll be looking at in, in early August that we think meets many of the, or meets all of these goals and maybe some others for the, for the downtown. And what the project we're proposing is to convert Main Street from the South Third-Houser Way intersection north through the Second Street intersection over to, what, to Mill Avenue as a two-way street. At the present time, it is one-way southbound. As you're looking at, at, at the, the graphics here, I'd like to encourage you, don't, don't count lanes, don't look where parking spaces are because we've just done some preliminary work. If we go forward with this project, the first thing we do is some very specific traffic modeling to determine the number of lanes. We still haven't talked to any of the, the adjacent businesses about parking, no parking in front of, um, certain portions of the, of the roadway. Um, but that would be, one of the goals of the project would be to add some additional on-street parking in total to, what, to this area of town. Um, the two-way, uh, the two-way traffic and in it, and specifically the reconfiguration of the Second and Main intersection to provide, to require traffic to come, make a 90-degree turn to go down Second should also significantly reduce traffic speeds in the downtown area, especially the reconfiguring here, um, the enlarging this, this island and maybe some, um, some curb bulb bouts or something where we have on-street parking could enhance pedestrian safety because it would shorten the width of, um, the number of lanes that an individual has to cross to get to the other side of the street. It also creates the, the opportunity in this area to create an outdoor, an outdoor space. When this was first done, we envisioned doing this project in, in two phases. The first phase allowing traffic to, to slip by onto Second Avenue until such time we had enough money to redo the luminaire and the, the light poles that exist here. The project we're proposing would do what we initially considered the first and second This is, this is just a, a summary of the, um, what I just pointed out in terms of the, some of the advantages we see. The, uh, the last advantage is it potentially provides us the opportunity if traffic coming down enters this intersection here at Second slows, has to make a right turn to go down Second Avenue. It, besides an outdoor plaza, it really, uh, gives the city the opportunity to create a signature entrance for the northeast corner of, of downtown. That, the representations here of signage or some sort of monument or something here is, is, uh, obviously just a representation to show that there would be something with some relief there. We haven't done any work with, with anyone. This represents in a block form, um, the building that is going to be constructed on the southwest corner of the intersection where Jet City Coffee was. It is not an attempt to look at the architect's plans and represent what that building is going to look like. It just gives you a sense of the size and the scale. And this is, this is a, um, an aerial view that, that, that shows the potential for a, for a plaza there. If we, if it proves the modeling and we would do on-street parking on Second, you can see how we potentially could use, um, curb bulb bouts to reduce the, um, the pedestrian, pedestrian The entire, uh, let's go here. Uh, the timeline is if we were to go forward with the project and even though it's being proposed in the 25, 25, 15, 16 TIP, some of the funding would be available for immediate use. And if after reviewing the TIP, it was a project we wanted to go forward with, we may have the opportunity to come back and amend the 2014 budget and start the project prior to the first of the year. This schedule, um, talks about getting, getting an early start and leading to hopefully construction by the, be completing the project before the end of next, next summer's construction season, although there's some timing and the modeling will show if, if that's significant with the, uh, replacement of the pavement on, on Logan. We anticipate that Park is going to be used as a primary detour route for a lot of the southbound traffic. And since, um, all that traffic would be coming down, having to make a right turn to go west on Second to, what, to get out of town if, or out of the downtown area, although they may be going elsewhere in the city, um, we may not be able to restrict the, um, the number of lanes we want to in the ultimate configuration during that construction period. And so we, we may delay some construction till, uh, spring of 2016, or we could do the work in, in, in two phases and take away a lane after next fall when the Logan Avenue project will be done. The, um, entire cost of the project is preliminarily estimated for planning, design, construction, construction management to be in the, the neighborhood of about a million dollars. The source of funding being proposed is metro mitigation funds from past projects that King County Metro Wastewater had, had done in the city that has, have not been spent yet. Uh, the reusing the traffic mitigation funds for the, of the impact fees that will be paid by the, um, apartment project or the mixed-use project in that intersection and some, um, rebudgeting some of the, the excess revenue that the, um, the ED has seen as a result of the permitting activity being much greater than was anticipated when the budget was adopted. And with that, I'll quit talking and answer questions.
Any questions? Well, I couldn't let it go without a couple.
Yeah.
And mine may be too technical that you don't want to get into this evening, but... I want to, can you go back to the, the picture that shows the overall and shows Mill Avenue?
The photo.
The photo? Well, any one of them, no?
No.
The photo because it, it shows Mill.
There we go.
Okay. So you show a right, right turn off of Mill onto Bronson?
Yes.
Would that be a signals intersection or a stop sign or?
Preliminary, it is assumed it's just going to be a stop sign.
Because it, would the goal be to get the, train the people not to go down Mill Street rather than, and go down Main?
Uh, yes, especially since a lot of the traffic, uh, we believe now is coming down Main Street, turning right on Hauser, then turning left on, on Mill to turn right onto Bronson. That traffic coming down, um, Main Street from Benson would just go straight on Mill, I mean, straight on Main, turn right on Bronson, cross the bridge.
Yeah. Makes sense.
But I, don't get me wrong, I'm all for this. So that's, so that's not where my questions are coming. Mine are, mine's more practical from driving it. I guess, just as a thought of mine, because you show, as you come down Hauser Way, there would be two right-hand turn lanes onto, on the Mill. My, I would give some consideration to just the one right-hand?
Left.
I mean, left-hand, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it backwards. So, so just one instead of the two because, and I don't know if you've done the traffic counts, but Hauser really takes the brunt of the, of that traffic.
Uh huh. Yeah, no, no, we have not done updated traffic counts or, or run the modeling. So that would be one of the first things we'd do if we went ahead with the project is we go out, set the counters, make sure that our, um, our traffic counts, our turning movement counts are up to date and then put that into the, to the traffic, to the traffic model.
And then, then as we go to, then, uh, back at Main, Third and Main, we'd have to add an additional signal?
Yes, we would have a, we would have a, a pole with a, with a short arm on it because it would only have to go over the, the one, the one lane. So we feel we could do it in the vicinity of where there's already, like, replace the luminaire pole with the luminaire and signal pole so it wouldn't put any other, uh, obstructions in front of the, the park there.
Okay. And then obviously down here at Second, Second and Main would be major traffic signal changes.
Yes. Yeah, and the, the construction budget is about half roadway work, half, well, it's probably about a, a third traffic work, a, a third plaza work and a third signal work.
Okay. And then on, on Second Avenue, if I, if I look at this right, you would put parking on that, on, on both sides of the street?
The, without, the, it's Chris Barnes' opinion based on his knowledge of the downtown areas. We really need two lanes westbound to handle the traffic we have on, on Second. But we would confirm that with the model. We already don't have parking in the most southerly left-hand lane as you go through in the next block. And so that the thought is to have parallel parking on both sides.
And my, my personal observation would be that that's a good idea because people come down and they stay in the two middle, the two middle lanes. They don't use either, neither of the other. You know, I guess at what time, uh, is a decision point needed from the council to proceed? I mean, because...
Our, our calendar is assuming that with the, with the, with the, with the adoption of the TIP, if this remains in the TIP as a project that is to be funded in 2016, that money is, much of that, or most of that money is available now. And then we would move forward with consultant selection and, and beginning design and follow-up with a budget amendment to bring some of that money so it could be spent in 2014 rather than 15.
Yeah. You look like you have a...
Oh, you know, just a comment. I mean, I, I, I just want to say that, uh, that I really like it. I'm excited about it. I, um, I think that even though it's a fairly short stretch, it's, it's probably one of the least intuitive traffic items that we have. That I, we have, obviously, we hear complaints about the one-way streets and we have a lot of couplets, but this is a really bizarre one where when you're coming down Main to actually turn left on, to Second Street, you have to kind of go the opposite direction of where you actually want to go. And I, you know, it took me a long time to sort that out myself. So I think it's going to be great for people that are visiting, that are looking for a restaurant, say, on Second Street, to be able to continue on Main until they find Second and turn left. Um, so I think that's exciting. And, and I'll be very curious to see, um, I mean, I hope the, I hope the businesses down there like it and I hope they take into account that it reduces confusion and, and helps people find their way around. Um, and then when it goes in, you know, to, to see, do we get a lot of value out of it?
Well, anecdotally, when, um, Greg and Chip and I were walking that area with a consultant looking for some ideas for a project, we happened to be standing in front of the Berliner when the owners of the Berliner were walking down the sidewalk. And they asked us what we were, what we were doing and we explained what we were looking at. And the, the owners, oh my gosh, that would be the best thing that ever happened to us.
That's exactly, yeah.
Have you ever stood here and tried to give somebody directions?
Yeah.
Of how to get here?
Yeah.
From, um, from South, from South Third?
Yeah, exactly.
And so at least from a quick conversation, um, they were very supportive of the project and would hope that the people that are on the east side of the street, having businesses driving in front of their businesses with this, with the city parking lot just to the north of their businesses, it would, it would increase their visibility and their parking situation because you see their business, then you pull into the parking lot to park as opposed to seeing their business and then having...
Then it's too late.
Then it, then, then trying to figure out how to get back there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's terrific. Not, yeah.
Well, even though we saw this in transportation on Thursday, I, I love the way the whole corner will, um, look different, um, with a potential plaza, but then when I'm looking at that photograph, that building's right up against the traffic lane. So how, I guess I'm just trying to figure out where you get that big plaza space.
Hold on, you, well, if you look at the, the plaza space is created, this, this lane goes away and so the plaza space is that area right there that is currently now street.
Okay. Because I'm going between that photo and the diagrams you gave us. Okay.
Yes, no, that's a good question. The diagram, the, uh...
Yeah.
The diagram assumes Phase, Phase, Phase Two went in, went into effect. This, the, the layout on top of the aerial photo was when we were still looking at just doing a Phase One project.
I see. Okay. That's what confused me. And I would think that with increased traffic, being able to get access, um, driving past the bike shop and then that other building, hopefully that building next to it would be improved into something better than what we have seen there lately? Because that, that would make that more valuable, I would think. I'm looking at Chip. Because that's not my favorite building in town, not my least favorite, but I just think that, that's such a key place. This should make a difference. Okay, let's do it.
Exactly. That's how I feel, yeah, that's great.
At one point, about, this is 20-some years ago and I'm sure the plan is around somewheres, there was a plan to just dead-end Mill at Bronson. But I'm, I'm looking...
Oh.
With the volume of trap, the traffic volumes most likely wouldn't make that...
Yeah, I would think, I would think today if you did that, Main Street would be a very busy two-way street and probably lose some of the traffic calming effect that if you're splitting traffic between Main and Mill.
So would you make, would you make the, this is, then would Bronson have to stop at Mill? Because, because...
Yes, well...
Make that a two-way?
I guess it would depending on what the, uh, what the modeling showed. I think the, the assumption would be that with, with, with a signal at this intersection, the traffic coming north on Main is going to stop and you're going to create enough gaps in the traffic along Bronson so that people stopped on Mill to make a free right turn would have, would have sufficient gaps. But the modeling would show us whether or not that was, that was true.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's exciting.
And I, I guess what I'm getting from the council, there's some, a general consensus that this should go forth and if, and my understanding is that this administration's goal to, if this is approved in this, in the six-year TIP, which will move it up to a 2015, 2016 project and, and, and actually, I wasn't in the Transportation Committee, but did you, I think you moved it up in priority to, to a higher priority?
From the unc歧 categories to, I can't remember what category we put it in.
So that as we, as we hear about the TIP and if we pass the TIP, there's going to be the assumption of the administration that we basically are approving, uh, the go-ahead to do it and where their, where their funding sources are. I just want to be, you know, I happen to agree with it, but I want to be sure that everybody understands that they've moved money around to make this work and that it's just a first step and maybe getting Second and Third, taking care of, I know Mr. Corman would love to see that.
I would.
Has a lot of other people, so...
You know, Mr. Person?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could just add that, um, so I've read and anybody that wants to can, can look online, there is so much debate about one-way streets and, and there's advocates both ways. There's, it's just like streets themselves, right? There's advocates that, that still say, oh, the city should hold on to these one-way streets and then there's, um, there's millions of people that feel the opposite. But, um, I did spend a lot of time looking through those pro and con arguments and, and I'm still convinced we should restore more of our two-way streets. One of the, um, one of the items that I thought of as you were mentioning, one of the shops, is that, um, something frequently not looked at is that, um, when you have, when you have one-way streets, you, you would just, you know, often motorists just get one perspective on the city. There's a lot of businesses that they don't really see or they see them in their rear-view mirror, a lot of corners, intersections where they're only seeing half of the intersection typically. Um, and so you'll notice like the new retail areas like the Landing, you know, they've got people going both ways so that a store you don't see when you're driving one direction, you spot going the other direction. Um, and so I think that this is really going to be good for business. I, I think it'll, you know, might, might slow people down a little bit because it's, one-way streets are good at getting people through at high speeds, but it's, it makes it less livable and it makes it less pedestrian. So I think it's great. I think it's a perfect one to get started with and see how it goes. And I think we, we should expect there will be some people that come back and have reasons that they're concerned and, and we should address those as best we can, but for the most part, I'm really excited about it.
Thank you. And I guess, uh, and I'd ask the councilors, is there's anything else that you wanted to ask questions about on any traffic program that's going on before we get to the next topic? Now would be the, be the time to bring it up if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, you didn't get very far, did you? Um, I guess I'd just like another update on Logan around and Park around the Landing area. Um, I know somewhere along the line, we're, we're going to be doing some enhancements to Logan further towards the city. Is that not correct?
The, the enhancements on Logan, uh, the project we're, be, I have under construction next summer is to, is to replace the, uh, the curb stay where they are between the bridge and Sixth, but we replace the old concrete panels and we will be widening and installing sidewalks with planar strips on the east side.
So that's a next summer project?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anything happening with Park? I know we continue to consider that we're going to have a lot of additional traffic there and, um, I'll have to say, as I drive Park, um, it's awkward and confusing that I have to keep changing lanes so I can go straight. I'm never in the right lane.
We'll be, we'll be evaluating Park, uh, as we're looking for someplace to, um, detour traffic from Logan next summer during the construction. And yes, we've heard that from several sources and we'll probably be looking at how we reconfigure Park, um, for the detour traffic with, with maybe some of those, uh, changes becoming permanent.
Okay.
To renew, refu, oh, refuse, reduce some of that confusion.
Okay. Thank you. Going back to Logan, this project is also going to realign the intersection coming out of the stadium, correct?
Yes, it, um, they, we work with the school district and we're going to be, um, reconfiguring, um, and installing new signals at Fourth and, um, Logan and, and taking the big high-speed sweep out of, uh, out of Third and, um, Logan. And then we're realigning the, uh, the driveway coming out of the stadium to line up with Third. So that that will, that intersection will be four-way signalized so after an event, traffic leaving will not only have a driveway that lines up with Third, but will also have a signal that would give them green time.
Right. Yes, just wanted to bring that out.
Yeah.
Because I think that's an enhancement. The only other thing, Terry and I had talked last week about, we knew you were working on one-way streets downtown. We, I guess two committees had seen the presentation of Two Wang Wells or Williams. Are you still going forward with that or?
That is, that is still something I think from a, from a traffic standpoint and a downtown plan standpoint, we would like to accomplish at some point. When we were looking at a, a first project to, what, to try, one that would minimize the signal work that would have to be redone, uh, we thought that the, uh, doing one-way on this short stretch of Main and Bronson, um, not only would be a good test of conversion to two-way streets, it also solved that east end connectivity issues. But we're hoping that it's, is successful and then, yeah, the next logical project is probably to, to way Wells and Williams.
Okay. Okay. I totally agree with you and I think the Main, this one is going to have a huge impact on downtown, positive impact. Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to bring those out.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, now Greg, Energize East Side.
President Person, members of the council, thank you. I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator, and I want to give you a fairly brief update on what's going on with the Puget Sound Energy Energize East Side project. As you're aware, the Energize East Side project is Puget Sound Energy's proposal to increase the transmission capacity, the electrical transmission capacity on the east side of Lake Washington. Lake Washington. It involves installing a 240 kilovolt transmission line between the Talbot substation in Renton all the way up to the Samamish substation in Redmond, and that's about an 18-mile stretch. And the, that Puget Sound Energy does say that they need, because of all the growth that's going on and the projections and their modeling, they need to increase their electrical transmission capacity, including putting one or two additional substations along that length. I think you're all familiar with this particular slide. This is several options that, route segments you might call them, that Puget Sound Energy is exploring. Really, the probably route options of the most interest in Renton on the south side are the options labeled as L, which is along the lake, it's situated along the Burlington-Northern Santa Fe Railroad lines along the lake. And the M option, which is the current alignment of 115-kilovolt line, north and south through the Highlands, and it runs on the west side of Monroe right now. So those are the two options in Renton. As you move north toward the Samamish substation up in Redmond, there's a lot of other options that other, the other fi, four cities that are involved are looking at and communities are looking at as well. So quite a bit of controversy in this proposal. So what Puget Sound Energy has done is they have put together what they call a community advisory committee. And this is a year before they proposed to start going into permitting or doing their environmental impact statement. So in 2014, what they're trying to do is make outreach to the residents of these various communities along these alignments and get input as to what the residents think and neighborhood values are. So the, the community advisory group has 24 members on it that represent a lot of constituencies and people associated with neighborhoods in all five of the cities. Five meetings among the community advisory group have been, seven meetings rather have been planned, five of them have already been undertaken. I'm, City of Renton's representative on the community advisory group. Each of the five cities has a city representative as long, as well as neighborhood representatives along these segments of the routes. The, at this point, Puget Sound Energy has put together some graphic representations of what these alignments would look like of the transmission line, and so I've got a couple of photos and graphic illustrations here to show you what they're proposing. This first one shows segment L along the lake, the Burlington-Northern Railroad alignment, and it's at the location of 3437 Lake Washington Boulevard North. The top photo is just a photograph. That's what it looks like now. You'll see there's no transmission line on the west side of Lake Washington Boulevard. There is a transmission line on the east side of the, of the Boulevard, and that's 115-kilovolt existing transmission line that is already installed. If you look at the lower photograph or graphic, what they've done is they show the much larger 240-kilovolt line to the, along the railroad line to the west of Lake Washington Boulevard. But what they've done in this particular photo is they've undergrounded, they switched the 100, the existing 115-volt line that's on the east side of the street that you see in the top photograph over to the west side of the street and undergrounded the distribution lines. So there is no more lines on the east side of the street on the lower photograph. So that would be what, the change in the view along the corridor with that particular proposal from the top photo to the bottom photo. So that's, that portion of Lake Washington Boulevard. I also need to say that this particular photograph does not capture the removal of vegetation that would be involved. Where there's a lot of trees along the route, the trees will be cut down, probably a 50 or so foot swath anyway, so that the new power lines would be out of the area where there could be interference by trees. So that's something that this photograph doesn't show really.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Greg, just to clarify, on the bottom photo, you're saying that the, the power lines on the east side of the top photo would be under, put underground on the bottom photo?
Right.
And then there, in addition to that, you'd have the, the other, looks like they've got the higher poles there also, and they're stretched out a little bit, further apart?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So the characteristic of these 240-kilovolt lines is they're about 100 to 120 feet tall, much taller than the existing lines. And what they would do between, the change between the top photo and the bottom photo is the 115-kilovolt circuit, which is the upper one on the existing line, would be moved over to the alignment along the railroad tracks. And all the other lines that you see there, some of them are telephone lines and telecommunications lines, would be put underground. So that alignment would disappear on the east side. And you would only see the, the larger alignment of transmission lines on the west side of the road. So that would be one of the options that they're looking at if they took the L alignment.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you know if undergrounding is even possible there? I know we've got, somewhere in there is a metro, big metro interceptor and a lot of other things. Does it seem reasonable to have undergrounded power there?
Undergrounding in this particular alignment would be very possible, very feasible. It involves putting a kind of a utilitor concrete vault extending along the railroad track alignment. It's, the problem with it is it's very expensive. It's, Puget Sound Energy states that the overhead lines will run about $4 million per mile. The underground lines is about $28 million, 25 to 28 million dollars per mile. And the problem is that Puget Sound Energy's tariffs allow them to charge the additional cost of undergrounding to either the community or the city, which is a very expensive undertaking. And they have not shown any interest in backing off of that position. They, they believe that if they underground the power lines or put a lake line in underwater, that the extra cost, the benefit would be to the adjoining community rather than the whole base of rate payers on the east side, and therefore the immediate community should pay for it. So that's something we have tried to make some headway against that argument and we haven't been successful.
And on that point, can I ask, is that like a state utility commission that approves those tariffs?
Yes, it's the W U T C, State Utility Commission.
Mr. Chair, Greg, that's very interesting, you know, because I, I just think, and I, I challenge, I would question that, that tariff policy on the merits of, you know, that's almost like saying that when we have road projects that are freeway projects that improve the surrounding freeways here in Renton, that, you know, the people of Renton need to pay for all of that. And we clearly know that everybody benefits from that because it's providing a corridor of transportation that just really makes it easy for people to get around. So I, I'm just interested in knowing if there's any conversations that anyone's having that is seeking to try to figure out other strategies to challenge that ruling because the other thing that I think about is that over decades, we upgrade all of our systems, the transportation, roads, all these things. And now that Puget Sound Energy is looking towards doing the same to the energy corridor, they're wanting to use antiquated technology. This stuff needs to go underground, and I believe they should pay for it.
That's been the position that I and several other community, more than several, quite a few community advisory group members have made. The Puget Sound Energy has not been willing to change their position on that point. It is a fairly large expense and they take the position that the reason for the tariff is the difference in cost is so great that they don't think it's fair to spread it to the entire community when there's a cheaper way to do it and get the same results in terms of a transmission capacity. So we are arguing with them on that. We haven't made any headway.
Who, who creates the tariff policy? How does that get constructed?
It's a submittal that's made, as I understand it, because the tariff lasts a certain length of time and then it expires and it gets renewed. And I forget how many years this particular tariff is and what, what year we are in this tariff. But what happens is, and the utilities have to do this when they change rates too, they make a petition to the W U T C, the Washington Utilities and Transportation Committee, with their proposed tariff language, there's a series of public hearings and so forth, and eventually the W U T C makes a decision to either adopt or adjust or change the tariff. And then that tariff that does get adopted becomes law for the period of the tariff.
And Mr. Chair, yeah, and if I could just follow up, I think Mr. Taylor is getting, going after a good question. I think the fact is Puget Sound Energy themselves have proposed this arrangement. I've seen them at public forums act like they're held hostage by this tariff, but I believe they wrote it and asked for approval of it, and now they use it as sort of a weapon to say they can't get around it. So I think they could probably go back and, and modify it. And I know I'm just sort of piling on, I'm preaching to the choir, but I did want to just take, add a little to what Mr. Taylor says. When you look at other utilities we underground, sewer lines, water lines, gas lines, we find a way to, to fund it. We don't complain and say, oh, we should put the gas lines overhead, we'll just, you know, they're plastic, we can put them up high and just run them around and save money. We find a way to do it. And so it does bother me that the electrical utility can't seem to, you know, they, for them, it's prohibitive, for everybody else, it's just business as usual to underground these things.
Well, we've made the suggestion that if you, Puget Sound Energy as the electrical utility, make a determination that it's in the whole rate payer's interest to underground it because it's a more, it's more secure from windstorms, it's, there's ways that you can make the argument that it's a regional benefit, not just a local benefit, then we believe the tariff wouldn't apply because they've made, the utility themselves made the decision that there was value added.
Yeah, they could work around it, yeah.
So they haven't been interested in that point of view so far.
So we need to create, figure out, I'd be interested in knowing what efforts could be made to create the kind of effort to move in that direction because this, we're talking about whatever happens now is going to be in existence for the next three or more decades. So we got to get it right now and the right investment needs to be made right now. The other thing too is that it becomes prohibitive in terms of future development that is going to be of a different nature as we continue to grow and, and, and come up with different design ideas on how structures should look. And we, we don't need a lot of poles and wires hanging above, above ground. We need to put that stuff underground.
I'm going to, Greg has about seven minutes to get through the rest of his slides and so I think we know that we all disagree with Puget Power on the tariff and, and the need to take a look at that. So Greg.
Okay. I'm carrying that message forward. Haven't made much headway yet, but it's an important message. This is along the M line, which is the existing route. You'll see on the upper photograph, the, there's a, there's two sets of H poles, they call them wooden poles with 115-kilovolt lines. The bottom repris, graphic shows the much taller 240-kilovolt lines, and this carries two circuits on it, which is six lines. So they would take away all the smaller 115-volt, kilovolt wooden lines and replace them with these big metal towers that would carry two circuits. So that's what it would look like at 1026 Monroe Avenue Northeast. That's a representation of what the change would look like if that alignment was chosen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Quick question. So there's been talk about undergrounding. Has there been talk about undergrounding on both routes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's not just been limited to one route. As a matter of fact, it's been even pieces of routes that we've talked about to limit the cost. And so what's happened more recently, and I'll go through this fairly quickly, the citizen advisory group has come up with five community values and environmental values that we believe are important to the community and to the environment. And these are that the power lines, to the extent possible, should avoid residential areas, avoid sensitive community land uses, avoid environment, sensitive environmental areas, protect mature vegetation, and utilize opportunity areas, which means go where there is industrial uses rather than residential uses. So those were five values that the C A G team agreed on. The group was, was led to do what's called a blind survey where they took all of these lettered segments and put them together in 18 different combinations. There's 18 possible combinations of these segments for 18 routes. And then they had the C A G members do what's called a blind survey. We didn't know which routes we were rating, we just knew what the result is of the ranking for our community values. And interestingly enough, of the 18 routes, the nine of the 10 worst-ranking routes, even though it was a blind survey, were along the L alignment. In other words, people just recognized that there were problems with community values, there were problems with environmental impacts, there were problems with the clearing of vegetation along those routes. So after the blind survey, just this last Wednesday, which was the most recent citizen advisory group, the group was asked to start trimming down routes that don't make a lot of sense. This is one of the 18 routes, they called them by tree names. This one was called Dogwood, and you can see what the alignment is. This is one of the L alignment routes, and then it goes and takes kind of a circuitous route to the north all the way up to the Samamish substation. This was the lowest ranking of all the routes. In other words, in the blind test, this was a very bad route for environmental impacts and for community values. And this, on the other hand, was one of the higher-ranking routes called Willow. Willow happens to be the existing alignment along the M line and all the way north at the 115-kilovolt line. This route was the second highest ranking route for not having as much negative impacts. So the citizen advisory group looked at all of the rankings of these 18 routes and they eliminated seven of those routes from further consideration at last meeting. Of the seven routes that were eliminated, just for your information, six of them were along the L line, used the L line segment. There's still three under consideration that use L line alignment, and there's eight under consideration that go north-south along the M line. So that's what's still on the table. The schedule right now, there's two more community advisory group meetings, and Puget Sound Energy would like a recommended alignment, a favored preferred alignment in October. So that's the timeline we're looking at. Then they're going to have a big community outreach at that time, show representations, maps of all 18 of these routes, and show the public which ones were recommended to go forward and which ones were recommended not to go forward by the community advisory group. So that's coming up in, in a couple of months. This is the project schedule, this is my last slide, and it shows that in 2014, we're in the public, the public part of the process that we're doing, public outreach and getting public input. 2015, 2016 is when permitting is going to be done. That includes the environmental impact statement and a design for the route. And in 2017, 2018 is when they propose to construct it. Meanwhile, just really briefly, the five cities have gotten together and formed a committee about the E I S, the Environmental Impact Study that will be done next year. We want to make sure that all the cities are on the same page, that we share values. And so representatives of the five cities are talking about what's going to be in the scope of the environmental impact statement, how to break it up, what it's going to look like, how it's going to be put together to make sure there's some commonality between the five cities. The scoping effort for that will start just about now. So we're going to, the cities are going to discuss what should be in that E I S and how, what the, what, how it should be handled even before, months before Puget Sound Energy actually gets to work on it. The nominative lead agency will be Bellevue for the whole process, but Renton will be a co-lead for the portion of the alignment that goes through Renton. So we'll have some say-so in the environmental work. So that's kind of what's happening right now. We'll keep you up to date particularly with that scoping activity with the other cities for the environmental impact statement. And as further routes are eliminated from consideration, we'll make, I'll make sure that you know about that.
Greg, thank you. Very good job, and, and I know you're representing us well because I've heard from other cities that you're there fighting for us. So, and I'd just like to point out to the, the public, and if I'm correct, is not only will we have the input into the environmental impact statement, but we also will be controlling the permitting process and the mitigations of whatever happens. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the committee to the hall and we'll return at 7 o'clock as a council. the committee to the hall and we'll return at 7 o'clock as a council.